All right, it is 4:30. Welcome to all of you. Happy New Year. Up to 2020. Before we begin, I'd like to ask that you join me for a moment of silence, followed by the pleasure of... Join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Steve Hamel.
Here.
Tom Brewster.
Here.
Brad Hand.
Here.
Wayne Barahona.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here.
All right, moving on to the agenda item, the agenda, I should say. Any comments or approval of that, please?
Make a motion to approve?
Support.
All in favor? All right, no, roll call.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hand.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
All right, at this time, we have time for some public comments, if you so desire. If you, unless not related to anything on the agenda at this point, you may step forward, state your name, by the microphone there, and have your say. Seeing no activity, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number of items there?
Make the motion to approve?
Support.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hand.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
And at this time, I'd just like to say publicly thank Duane Walsh, who's not with us today, but he will be resigning, or has resigned, from the Board of Adjustment. He's served the city in numerous capacities over the years, most recently on the Board of Adjustment, and I just want to say thank you to him for his service. So, if you get a chance to see him, offer your congratulations or your thanks as well. All right, moving on then to old business, reviewing the proposals for the redevelopment of city-owned properties. Take us away, Sam.
Thank you, Mayor. We have, we now have four proposals in front of us. Two of them were presented at previous council meetings and were simply entered into the record, but were not on the, on the agenda. You have one proposal for DJ's, you have two proposals for Sunset, and both of the Sunset proposals tie in 1023 Garfield. Recommendation from city attorney and I is to proceed with the DJ's Redemption Center proposal to Kent Lorenz. We do have a draft that Mike and I are working on. We hope that we could, we can potentially set the hearing on January 15 for February 5, but that depends on the remainder of our review of the agreement. As for the Sunset, there are now two proposals to consider. Oh, Kerwin and Kathy here. Okay. I printed out those proposals, and they're also in your packet. Ultimately, you'll have to decide. You have two good proposals. One, one is better by the other. Kerwin Sterling's is better by $4,999, so it's a better proposal monetarily. Tim Potaman's proposal is best in terms of, of originality and also track record. So you've got two good proposals. Ultimately, you would need to make the call.
How would it be if we entertain those at two separate issues?
I would recommend that.
Okay.
Go ahead and approve that.
So let's discuss the Lorenz prop, the, um, the Lorenz offer first, and decide what we're going to do with that one, and then we'll move on to the other one.
In a sense, you've already given us the go-ahead on the Lorenz property because we've only had one proposal all along, so you could certainly offer a motion to proceed, but there will be two more votes on that issue.
And, Mr. Mayor, may I interject?
Yes.
I think what the city manager and I are looking for is not your approval on the proposal on DJ's verbatim, in other words, every term, but just a motion to allow us to continue to proceed, pursuing that and that offer only at this time. Is that correct, Sam?
Yes.
Because I would anticipate there would be still some back and forth on the final terms.
I would move that you proceed. Support. Any further discussion?
Are we having a clause in the contract that would kick in for bond or security that they get these properties cleaned up, so we don't get them back and having to go down this road again?
That's one of the things we're talking about as a staff and city attorney, that model, or a model where if certain things aren't done by a certain time, the purchaser loses its rights to the property.
Back to the city.
But will there be something that they have to put collateral, or an insurance Because I don't want to go down this road six months from now or a year from now where we're getting these properties back in the same state they are. I want some security in here that they're gonna, I trust them, but I want it in writing, that they're gonna clean these properties up. So I want some kind of security for the city that we're not getting them back and have to start this process all over.
So noted. I would say that what we've done to this point is used the $8,000, if you will, as the carrot and stick.
Okay. Well, I, I think it should be in our motion that we have some type of security.
The only thing I moved was that they proceed with putting the thing together.
Yeah, but I'm just asking... Because I don't want to go down this road again.
So this will be brought up to the council again for approval, once you guys have done your work?
Any final offer, if you will, has to go through the statutory proceedings of public notice, a hearing, final approval by the council.
I think with that, then, I think Brad's comment should be taken to note for that preparation. Continue on with the motion.
If I might?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
No.
So, there's two ways to look at this. You can look at the $8,000 as the carrot and stick, as Micah said, or we can go a step further and ask for, figure out what we think the overall cost would be, and ask for a surety in that amount. And that might be a lot to ask for. So, what we've built in, or what we're planning to build in, is using the carrot and stick for the $8,000. So if he starts work, he just loses, loses out on the incentive that the city was offering. But if we ask for, let's say, $50,000 surety, that's a, that's another matter. We can. And we can talk more about that as we...
I just don't want to go down this road again and us getting them back and...
Well, if we want to incentivize it, like they're talking, with the carrot and stick, I mean, if it's not taken care of in six months, 12 months, whatever timeframe, if the $8,000 is off the table and becomes a responsibility of the, how we can back away from that.
What about tax assessment? We've used that in the past for incentives for, for newer development properties, where after a year, they don't have anything built, it would be assessed and taxed as if it was worth what it would be worth with the property built on it.
A minimum assessment agreement?
Correct. That would be another approach that we'd use in the past.
They can default on that, too, and then we end up with it back.
They can default on any of it, I'm afraid, but...
I think if you have a surety bond or something like that, then, you know...
Well, how about if we just let them pursue the options as they're working through this and take that under advisement, and, as you have time to think about it, then come up with the best option for it.
Very good.
Okay. So there's no motion required at this, no motion?
There is a motion.
Yeah, there is a motion.
All right, then we're ready, I think we're ready to vote. Let's have a roll call.
To just, with the mayor and city attorney to move forward on an agreement?
Correct.
Correct?
City manager.
City manager.
Yeah, not mayor.
For your, for your consideration.
Yes. Okay, roll call.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hand.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, now let's move on to the Sunset Motel and Garfield properties. As Sam stated, we do have two offers on the table now. Both have their advantages and disadvantages.
If I might?
Yes.
Say, this has been a little bit of a challenge for, for us and for me, partly because, you know, we're outside of the sealed competitive bid process. So, at this point, the council is allowed to consider whatever factors it would like to consider, and it's been a little bit awkward because we've, we've, we received one proposal, and then a few weeks later, we've received another proposal that had similarities to the first proposal, and this is precisely why it's better to do a sealed competitive bid process. So ultimately, you will need to, to decide. I kind of laid, laid out my recommendation earlier. You have two good proposals, and there's pluses and minuses to, to either one. And like I said, one has a monetary advantage, and the other has the advantage of originality and track record.
In either of these proposals, do we have a dollar figure as far as potential assessment or total value of the project? I thought I saw in Kerwin's that he had estimated $150,000 would be the value of the property, once it's upgraded at Sunset Motel, but I don't recall having seen anything from Tim's proposal. Did you see anything like that?
Trying to remember the $150,000 part. Oh, yes. Increased by $150,000.
That's correct. Yes, that's his estimate, based on adding, you know...
And I guess that's all subjective, because it's not, you know, there's, I guess I can say that my house is worth, if the county auditor's listening, $25,000.
Well, neither were able to be here today, so Tim, Tim had a funeral to attend, and Kerwin had other engagements, and so you're certainly welcome to, you know, Mike and I have, we have a lot going on right now, so if we want to just move forward with the DJ's agreement and defer Sunset, but certainly if you want to give us direction on Sunset, we can.
Can we go back to sealed bid? Give us your final offer between the two of them?
We can.
Trying to, I'm trying to, I'm thinking on the fly how we would construct that.
Kerwin offered, Tim counter-offered, Kerwin came back with an offer, let them seal bid, and they're both interested.
Yeah, part of the problem is, is that in the first proposal, after he does the improvements and adds a two-car garage and moves the house, and there was no estimation of the increase in value, but obviously there would be. Yeah, we're kind of going back and forth here. I'm not sure that's the right way to approach this.
No, and it's, it puts, Kerwin's late bid puts Tim at a disadvantage.
Yes.
Not that he didn't have time, I mean, he had very little time, but had some time to try and counter the counter, but, yeah, I don't think the city needs to be in the real estate business. Corey's good enough at that.
Yep.
I like the idea of, or can we at least find some way to structure this where we can do an exact apples-to-apples comparison for not only monetary value, but then an ability for us to assess the overall value to the community?
Well, thank you, Ken. From a tax revenue perspective, that'd be interesting, know the difference between the two, as far as what the city would, would benefit from taxation, between what we've seen both of them propose to do, but I don't know how well we can do that either.
And when I talked with Kerwin, his plans were to clear the property and add up to six more mobile homes.
Yeah, I don't know what it looks like from a tax, you know...
Dollar-wise, no, but in terms of, I mean, there's an intangible benefit in that it provides additional housing, you know, that's always a concern. Maybe we have enough housing now, I don't know, but...
How would that compare to a commercial building and usage, and what it's worth and the value? That's what I'm saying, is that in the end, with what they're proposing, which one, from a revenue perspective, is a better position for the city? And I can't, I couldn't tell you that right now.
Well, I don't know if we could anyway.
Yeah, without plans, without...
Tim's proposal has no plans for that Sunset Motel property, once it's cleared. I mean, he has, will possibly do something, but...
Any other proposal doesn't have what would be moved in to the Garfield property either. Kerwin would be moving in
Right.
a house from somewhere else. We don't know at this point whether it's one-story or two-story, whether it would be a slab or on a basement.
Right.
That's fine.
Okay. And then, was that meant to be sold, then, or to be rented?
If you want to come forward, please, state your name and just come in at the mic, if you would, please.
Okay, I'm Kathy Sterling. My name's also on the bid.
Okay.
All right, what we're planning on, we have a house located. It's a one-story house. It's about 1,200 square feet. Yes, we would put a basement under it, and we would either use it for a rental, or we would sell it
Okay.
down the road.
Okay. That's what I was wondering, yes. Thank you.
And if you're going to go back to sealed bids, if you go back, then we would have first choice on it, if you go back, because that was one of the things with your first time around. Anybody with adjacent property was considered first before anyone else. And since our, our property is adjacent to the Sunset Plaza Motel, we would like to be considered first in that.
Was it that they were considered first, or that they were, had a lower minimum bid?
Had a lower minimum bid.
Lower minimum bid.
Okay.
So are you still going to go back to that? Because then, you know, it's hard to go back, once we've, that's been gone. So, and I know you guys are discussing it, but, you know, this is to our advantage to put something in there worth value, because we don't want, say, garbage trucks parked beside our homes, because they are homes for a lot of people. We've had people there for many, many years. And we don't want to see the value of our property go down, and we don't, didn't want to see the value of the other property go down. We had made several attempts before the city got a hold of it, to try and reach out to the heirs of David Enfield, and we never could find them. We tried, because our intent was way back then, to try and purchase the property. And we had no, no way of getting a hold of the people. Last, we were up in Minneapolis with some unknown brother or something. So, it's always been our intent to improve that property, if we could get it. Unfortunately, there was the glitch with asbestos, and now that we found a different way to remove the asbestos legally, and so it's safe for everyone, we can now afford to remove that asbestos. Our original bid, we didn't think we would be able to afford to, and still make it viable to continue.
Did you feel that maybe you had to, once you figured out an alternative asbestos remediation rule, do you feel like that you had to kind of rush this bid to get it in? And would more time allow for you to be able to paint us a clearer picture?
Well, we already know that we will fix the house as it sits there.
Mm-hmm.
And that house does need work on it. The furnace is not good in it, water heater, there's been damage. We know we have to remove the asbestos that's on the steps going downstairs. There's also been doors kicked in. It all needs new paint. There's some flooring issues also in it. Well, we already have one house on that street, and that's in the middle of the existing trailer park that we have, so we know we can get it rented, and we know we can get it up within 30 to 45 days. We'll have it, somebody in there, once we get it. The other, we know, we haven't plotted out the exact location of new trailer homes, but we will be moving some in, and that is exactly what we'd use it for.
Because I know there was some question about infrastructure and that sort of thing, with how that was going to work, at least in my conversations with Kerwin, you know...
The infrastructure, when you're talking about it, you're talking about what it's now zoned for and everything?
I'm talking more about what it was going to take to, to convert it to your vision.
Okay. We know we have to put, the, the house itself will take work, but that won't be as much work as getting in new water lines and sewer lines
Right, and that's kind of what I was thinking.
and concrete that we need in there. And that's where it's going to take some time. We hope to have within, you know, six months, we hope to be at least bringing in trailers by then. Part of it is finding trailers. We don't want junk.
Right.
We, we manage to pull a couple out every year that are getting up there in years, and we want newer trailers in there, and then it's the, us finding them.
So the challenge that we have here is we're comparing two really good, but very different proposals. And Mike and I were just having a sidebar on, on what we think we probably need to do going forward, is, is the city needs to identify what its non-negotiables are, meaning timeframe, and, you know, whether we, whether we're okay with the house, for example, at Sunset staying or going. We can't commit the planning commission and the zoning board of adjustments to a certain path. The planning, one of the, both proposals need rezoning, and both proposals probably need to go to the zoning board of adjustments. And so, we have these non-negotiables that need to be worked through, and my recommendation is, and one of the things that Mike and I were talking about, is if, if we move forward with the negotiating, the agreement on DJ's, it will give us an idea of what our non-negotiables are on, on the Sunset. And if, Micah, if you could step in and help, help me out on this.
And I think what Sam's alluding to there is, as you work through the DJ's process, we all will have a better understanding of what the council believes is important for the city, whether it's a performance bond-type arrangement, or if and to what extent the city is willing to warrant merchantable title, what covers, what costs it's willing to cover in terms of closing costs and abstracting and things like that. And getting those things in front of you, in the context of DJ's, will help you figure out what the city is willing to do in other properties, and so you can identify those, and then these interested parties may or may not have less interest. But also, then, you have to identify the key components of what you want out of this transaction. Is it important to have a certain amount of taxable value? Is it important that it be done in a certain timeframe, et cetera, et cetera. So I think what Sam is suggesting is that there's some work to be done on DJ's that will help you get to a decision point on these other two properties. So, I think what you're recommending is, take these under advisement, continue to do some heavy lifting on the DJ's property, and then come back to these two with maybe some more definitive requirements of what this deal would look like, potentially.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Kathy.
Looking at Kerwin's proposal, and everything he's going to do is going to fit in with that neighborhood. You already got trailer courts on each side of that property. The house is already there, so I can see it working very well for him to bring in other trailers, he'll tie that all together. I just think it's, you know, it's a fairly good plan of what he's, you know, he's going to get rid of the old motel part, trees, and I think when he, when Kerwin's done, I think it's going to look in, you know, it's going to look
Congruent.
uniformed, uniformed and improved. I think it's, it's worthy to move forward on this offer from, from them.
But they've had two shots. Tim has only had one. That's my one concern. That, the process, we're in a kind of a sticky-wicket process here now, because of the way it's coming in.
We're going to be in that way anyway. The only other fairer way to do it would be put it up for an auction.
Which we did, or, no, we did, took the sealed bids.
Tell them what our, what our guidelines are, what our minimums are, and then put it up for an auction. I mean, you, because Kerwin had to put a sealed bid in first, then we let anybody open it up. Well, once he found out the asbestos thing could be handled a different way, that changed the game.
Mm-hmm.
So...
There were no sealed bids the first time.
Yeah.
No, that was after, yeah, that bid came in after the closing
Yeah, so...
time passed, so, I mean, they're both in the same boat, in terms of the bids that were submitted, they both came in after the
Yeah, absolutely. So then if, then the other thing is either put another bids out for it, or put it up for auction.
I think we need to, I mean, just, I'm thinking about, Tim gave a, you know, a better offer, and he may be interested in doing, you know, up in his ante, too, as, as this goes. And I don't, you know, how do you handle that, I don't know, but I think, as Sam is suggesting, I think we need to move forward with the DJ's, is probably their best option at this point. See how that goes in terms of our responsibilities and costs involved, and, and give this time to just simmer a little bit.
I think it's responsible, too, to the parties who are involved at this point, if we're going to put, require some kind of a upfront bond on them. At this point, that's not been considered in years at all.
I, Kerwin, I talked to him about it, and he was, he wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
So I make the move we move on.
For how much?
We didn't talk about the dollar amount.
But I, I worry that it's going to look that we do DJ's one way, and then we do Sunset another way, and then all of a sudden, we're, we're not, we're not congruent
Yeah.
with, with how we approach it. So I, if we're going to move forward in adopting official language as to how these negotiations are going to go, we need to do it for each proposal. So, I would say that we don't move forward with any proposal until we figure out exactly what we're looking for, so we can grade these proposals on the same playing field, and not just on something more than money. Or not something, that it's not just money, not just about money. It's about, we can, we know that we've got requirements A, B, and C that, that we consider are non-negotiables, like you said, that we have to maneuver through, and then we can make an informed decision. Not that, I think Kerwin had a great, I had a great visit with him, and he had a lot of information put together, but it was December 31st, and then all of a sudden, now, because now everything's changed. So, if we're going to make a commitment to say that we're going to establish a rubric as to how we're going to move further, we need to do it with both, with all three proposals.
If I might?
Yes.
That's very difficult to do, and here's why. Because up until this point, our standard has been, let's get these properties cleaned up as quickly as possible and get them back on the, on the tax rolls, and it is difficult to compare two proposals that are so different.
Right.
And so what we're looking at, Wayne, is if we, some of this will flesh itself out with DJ's in terms of the timeframes. How quickly do we want to, want these properties to be cleaned up? Do we want to explore a minimum assessment agreement and a bond? Those are the three things I can think of right now. And I would ask that we continue with the motion that's been approved on DJ's, and I think the cleanest thing to do right now is to, is to defer this item to the next council meeting. Tim would be here today, but he was at a funeral for his nephew, and so he's not able to join us. And, and I know time is important, and this has dragged out for a long time, but I think months from now, it's going to be important that we got it right and took our time to do it. So that's my recommendation.
I'm okay with that. I'll move that we defer to the... I'll move that we defer till the, on the Sunset and the residential property until the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, is there support for that?
Support.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
No.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
All right. So you have what you need, but everything you've got all the basics covered behind me?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Moving forward then on to the new business, item 5A, the capital improvements for the city capital improvement plan as well as emergency services. Sam, what can you tell us about that?
So this year is different than previous years. We, last year we went to the effort of developing a 15-year capital improvement plan. I talked to the emergency services departments, and we collectively agree that it would be good to keep that updated. And so the first part of this agenda item is a subset of the second, as far as the four emergency services departments go.
All right. Are there any questions on the capital improvement plan that you have before you? Any comments? I assume that this is just for our notification, we're not really.
Same as before.
Sam, it's a plan.
Same as before.
Only a plan subject to changing budget.
So are we receiving this? Is that what we're doing?
In past years, you've offered a motion to approve.
Okay.
And it's an annual, it's an annual update.
That's the precedent.
Is that last year? Was, was my first meeting last year, but was it, was it a motion to, doesn't really matter?
Yeah, we've always approved it, I think.
Yeah, I just, I understand it's just a plan, but please give it enough thought and process and importance to know that if it's in year one on this plan, you're gonna be dealing with it here in the next month, 'cause it's gonna be in front of you. If it's in year two, you're gonna be dealing with it in the near future, so you need to at least think about the first three years really seriously as we go into the budget. At least accept that it's worth that, but I know it's nothing, it's not a guarantee of expenditure of dollars, we understand that.
Right, that's the final question.
Yeah.
Yeah, whether it's a motion to approve or a motion to acknowledge, it doesn't make a difference, as long as we're seriously considering.
I'd make a motion that we approve, yes.
All right, support for that?
Support.
Any further comments? Roll call, please.
I guess I, I, well, I'm assuming that we're approving, receiving the plan, but I certainly don't wanna go say we're endorsing all of these expenditures without looking into them a lot further.
Yeah, I think the final approval, Pete, comes when we approve the budget, after the budget process.
Absolutely, yeah, that's fine.
This is just kind of the first round.
You are committing to consider it, you are not committing to the item itself.
That's a budgetary item.
Okay, does that satisfy your concerns?
It's fine.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, moving then to the second part of that, the emergency services. Any comments that you'd like to make on that, Sam?
No, sir.
It's, is it any different than what we had six months ago when we were considering?
There's been some changes, yeah.
It's so small, I had a hard time reading it, but what, what were some of the changes? I didn't compare, have time to compare.
There was a, a reduction, Brad helped me out with this one, there was a reduction in some of the discretionary items for the fire department.
Yes.
there was some equipment adjustments on the SCAT spreadsheet. Mind if I ask Kevin to?
Yeah.
Kevin, are you prepared to help us out with this one?
Sure.
Okay.
So I think some of the biggest changes that SCAT made to our equipment plan is that we broke a few things up and made it more, made it more clear. So for example, when we originally had it, I think we had it as renovations, and then we added in, updated furnishings and like garage heating for our ambulance garage. Some of the other things is when we went for the third ambulance, we went to the library and talked about installing that railing, helping them out, modifying that for the EMA vehicle, and those numbers are reflected here in our plan.
That's all you got? Let me have a second, thank you. Yes, Dennis?
Hi.
Come forward, please.
I got in my notes, at the December 17.
Station eight for the record, please.
Dennis Van den Hall, I'm county supervisor. At our December 17 meeting, we approved $15,000 to allocate to ambulance service for, it's kind of for, through the EMA commission, I guess, a recommendation for personnel. A lot of these smaller towns and stuff are having a really hard time getting people in, so everybody that applied for it received these funds, so.
Okay.
That will be.
If, if you don't mind, Danny, it was not done based on size?
No.
So Archer got the same thing as Sheldon?
There isn't an Archer.
Oh, I suppose. I'm sorry, you probably got, you probably got.
We crossed.
Hot sweats.
We crossed that bridge already.
There we forget that.
That was before my time, so.
Wayne, Sutherland though, would've got the same as Sheldon.
Yep. So, any other? I just thought that would, should be.
I have a point if, if I might.
Yeah, please.
So Dennis, if, if you could help me out with this one, so my understanding is, is that the offer of those funds didn't necessarily commit those who accepted it to hiring additional staff, it could be used for?
No.
A current staffing and for equipment.
Yep.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we didn't limit it to just staff, no.
And is that just a one-year commitment, or is it multi-year?
It's, I'm not sure, I think it's year by year.
Okay.
So, but it's probably gonna kind of tie in with the money that we give each ambulance service for replacement of vehicles and equipment also.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dennis.
Kind of the way it was turned.
Do you have additional comments, Kevin? Do you have more comments? Okay, very good. All right, any further discussion on the emergency services plan? Not, we'll, motion to approve that as well?
So moved.
Support? Did you say yes, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Again, basically, we're receiving the document.
Basically, yes. And following protocol from precedent from previous years. Okay, roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
All right, then moving on to a discussion regarding the ISU extension recommendation regarding public comment period. Hold up here a minute.
I make motion that we adopt the recommendations of the ISU extension.
Okay, I'll support that.
If I might?
Please?
Is the, is the, is the motion to set the public hearing? Or is the motion to?
Is that, is that the?
Well, number one was consideration, so I'm making motion that we accept the recommendation.
As well as the draft resolution.
If I can clarify, so the?
Please do.
The information from ISU is a, is a general recommendation, and we've made it more specific with, with the resolution, which is the second part. So I don't think we need a, need a motion on the first item, we can just simply review the draft resolution and set the public hearing. There's really one vote that's needed, to set, is to set the public hearing on the draft resolution. And it, and if I might, it's a very short resolution, if I could just take a moment and read it for those, benefit of those watching. Resolution establishing a public comment period at the beginning of city council means, I'm gonna skip the whereas's and just read the basics of it. The city has had a longstanding practice to allow for public comments at the beginning of the meeting for items not on the agenda, and the city desires to expand this practice to include public comments for items on the agenda, on the agenda, except for formal public hearings. And there is not a clear standard for allowing public comments on the various agenda items except for the established public hearing items. And the city desires to implement a process where the public comments on all the agenda items except for formal public hearings can be heard in. And the public hearing items will not be impacted by these new procedures, except the four-minute, and that's the only thing we need to talk about, is like, four minutes, will apply to the public hearing items as well, and then therefore be it resolved comment period at the beginning of the city council means, in accordance with Exhibit A of the resolution, and Exhibit A has some basic instructions and votes, please give them to the city clerk before the meeting. Be concise and limit your comments to four minutes. You may not save your time for later or yield the remainder of your time after speaking. Please be seated. If you are addressing a matter on the agenda, state the agenda item you are speaking about, and if you're speaking of a range in chronological order, try not to duplicate. Please direct comments to the entire council, not to an individual. Questions and issues raised during this time will generally not be answered during this time. Maintain a courteous and respectful manner, and if you are the presenter on a reform process, does not apply, although you are asked to be succinct in your presentation. Iowa law, the last point is Iowa law requires certain matters to have public hearings, which have their own comment periods. Comments pertaining to a public comment, a comment period will also apply for public And then I also drafted a breach. Mayor is welcome to, to change that to kind of fit.
Okay. I'll, I'll remove my motion.
You what? So, so at this point, there is no motion on the floor.
I'll motion, I'll make a motion that we set the public hearing for January 15th on this resolution.
Any additional comments? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, then there's a request to begin the hiring process for full-time events on the agenda. Anything you would like to highlight at this point?
No, sir, I stand for questions.
Okay. like, I think we should approve this request to begin that process.
I would make the motion.
Support.
Okay, the questions I have, are you looking to do, or you don't know yet how many?
What, what we're looking at is developing a, a short list, like other, other communities do. So we're, we're hoping to, and no appointment would be made unless it's approved by the city council. We're hoping to shave off a month or two off of the process by doing the posting now, doing the, doing interviews as, as soon as possible. We have Jeff Kehler coming on, the chief of police process, there's some testing that he can, he can actually do while he's, while he's here, so this motion would authorize that. He's to deliver the post-test and the MMPI and some of the other things, and we're paying him already to be here, so it makes sense to, to do that. In fact, one of our reserve officers is, is willing to participate in, in that process, even though they wouldn't be applying for chief, they're willing to participate with the chief candidates on the testing. And it makes sense to do it that way, so.
In your comments, you said you're not asking for permission to over-hire. Are you thinking one, two, full-time and some part-time?
Well, I.
Or are you not at a point where you're gonna put a number on it yet?
Not at that point. I mean, I, I would say, I would say at least one and one, but we don't know what will happen over the next, next couple of months.
Okay.
And there is a chance, you know, not asking, you know, a request to over-hire is a major budget consideration, and that really should, you know, you're basically adding, you're going to add another officer, like we had in 2003, that really should be discussed at, at the budget meeting. And like I said in my explanation of this, because if, if we, if there ends up not being, if we predict there will be, then I have a good applicant that's on the hook, that doesn't have a position and goes elsewhere. So, there's a downside to this too, but like I said, I think the upside is greater.
I would entertain a motion to approve this, this request.
Thought we had a motion.
We did?
We do.
All right. Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Barahona.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
All right, then we move on to the Crossroads Pavilion Report. Tricia, happy to see you.
Hello, thank you first for having me and giving me the opportunity to give you our calendar year recap of 2019. Mainly what I wanna do is go over some of the statistics and the facts of numbers of events that take place there. Truly, it's an asset, and I thank the city, the community for the investment that we've made. In the beginning, we all knew that this was not going to be something that would make a profit, or as Sam says, our goal is a light shade of pink, I think that you said I could quote you on that, right? The light shade of pink. And what I would like to do, though, today is mainly go over the, the statistics and the facts, and if you don't mind, leave the financials for when we get to budget time. I don't wanna speak out of turn on debt service or where we're at right now halfway through the fiscal year. I would just like to share on the calendar year, if that's okay. But the, the commitment that we made and the investment that we made, it's important for us to share what's happened and what's happening over at the pavilion. Nine months into the general manager position has given me a truer feel, looked on how busy it actually is out there. Unless you're in that seat or in that environment every day, you might not realize what all it takes to run everything that happens, and in turn to see the impact that it has on our city and our region. So I shared with you in your little packets some, some general numbers, but also Kevin Kane, our board president, likes to see graphs, so on page three, you'll see graphs, just to give you a little bit of a visual on some of the facts as well. But in 2019, we ended up with 154 events total. Thirty-five of those were weddings, 24 were complimentary. Complimentary is what we do in agreement with the SEDC, we have blackout dates, the young professionals group, and also the community schools, and how often they use our facility. And I thought that's important to, put those markings aside, so you can see that, how well we work hand in hand with our fellow businesses and the schools and whatnot. And then we had 15 hosted. This past year, we had a couple inaugural events that we started. One is the Beyond Limits Ability Expo, we plan to do that every year in May, and that's an expo we hope to grow, and that showcases items that are available to those with disabilities that maybe they're not quite aware of yet. Rob Rosaboom has been. Rob Rosaboom has been key on the startup of that and getting that off to a great start, and I think it'll be phenomenal even this year. Um, Chef Suzanne is new to the pavilion this past year, she has committed to be with us in two thousand and twenty each month, and it's a wonderful monthly event that takes place at the pavilion. If you haven't gone to a class yet and you like to cook or just like to sample, come on out. We also did our first bridal expo, it went over so well, we will do this each year in October. Um, and just to recap of that, we had over two hundred and fifty guests come through our bridal fair. The same day, Sioux City had their bridal expo going on, so I thought we still had a good pull. The radius from that alone, um, we had forty-nine, no, excuse me, fifty-nine brides, and the brides we pulled were from Iowa, Illinois, Missouri, Nebraska, Minnesota, Wisconsin, South Dakota, and Kansas. And I did do a radius of a map of pinpointing where everybody comes from, but I'm kind of cheap and I went to a website that's free, so if you want to print, you have to pay, so I couldn't share that map, thank you. But I'll gladly make one for you someday. Um, but same goes, if you look at the zip codes of where our businesses are coming from, it's about the same radius. We are pulling in from mostly the Northwest Iowa area, but we are pulling in from other states and other areas. Um, and then just to show you, at the end of two thousand and nineteen, seventy-nine of those events were corporate social. And if you look at a graph on page three, you'll see in two thousand and nineteen, over fifty percent of our rentals were corporate social, and not quite a quarter of them were weddings. So if you remember when we first started dreaming about this place, weddings were going to be, we hoped, the given, and our goal was to get out there, and what more can we be as corporate, social, et cetera? So I think we're right on target, actually, I think we're exceeding the target that we dreamed of. Um, looking into two thousand and twenty, we already have seventy-three events, and we've already taken a few more just today, we already are now booking events for two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one. Um, thirty-six of those are wedding, we have the hosted events and a few complimentary. Looking at the calendar, we think we have a breathing point coming in February, March, might be a little, but we thought that about January as well, and we've already filled up the calendar for January. Um, also, I like to put it out there that when we host an event, so we had a hundred and fifty-four, one thing I like people to keep in mind, the work that it takes beforehand, meeting with the clients, to get that event where it needs to be, running the event obviously takes the day, but the cleanup, it's a good day's worth of work to host a day's event. So if you think about the physical work that gets done, is a good two days for each one event, just to give you an idea of working days that gets put into it. Does that make sense? I hope that makes sense. So that'd be like three hundred and fifty-eight.
So in effect, at a hundred and fifty-four, you're running three a week, you're, you got a full week.
Yeah. So, and, and there are times when we might have two or three events in one day.
Mm-hmm.
So that doesn't mean we have a hundred and fifty-four days of events, we have a hundred and fifty-four paid, right. There's many times where we overlap, so there is room to continue to grow, but it's, the margin is narrowing, which is great, you know, because in the beginning, we thought weekdays would be, uh, cumbersome to fill, and they're coming, and most of it's word of mouth, we really haven't been able to do a lot of market, marketing strategy yet. It's been word of mouth, which we appreciate. Um, and then some of the key features that we hear out there is our location, prime highway sixteen eighteen, the view, accommodating of our, uh, indoor and outdoor space, audio visual, where people are appreciative that we can have the multi-breakout sessions, we've had meetings before where all four rooms are used, if not five, including the green room, which is Heather's office. Um, recently, uh, obviously restaurants, the convenience of grocery, et cetera. Um, but recently, we had an agricultural business come in and book a meeting last minute, they needed a place now. We were able to accommodate them, they've booked five times since and have more coming. One thing they appreciated the most, obviously our location, the hotel right there, but then they asked about an airport. We just so happen to be right in the landing strip area of that, so they are excited that now they can fly in and host their meetings, and it's a good central location. Um, the, another one I want to point out is because of where we are and the way we built it and the, the thought, that process that went into it, we had a wedding this July, I like to point this one out. She, not one person from the wedding was from this area, there were three hundred and fifty guests, and not one person was from this area. The groom was from North Dakota, the bride's family's from Waterloo, they met at a job, live somewhere in Minnesota. They picked us because of our location and the amenities. They spent a good two and a half days in our community, shopping at our stores, eating at our restaurants, filling up with gas, playing in the parks, et cetera, swimming at the pool. So I do think, we see it in the hotel motel tax, that that continues to go up, and I think that is a true reflection of the pavilion being there. But our loss, if that, I believe what we had talked about is steady, even with the loss of like a ShopCo, we're still maintaining, if not keeping ahead of that. So I, I, not to toot our own horn, but at the same time, we really do, at the pavilion, have a wonderful impact on our community. Um, then on the last page, all the graphs, you can look at that, just to give you a visual, uh, breakdown of each year, what was corporate, what was wedding, complimentary, hosted, and the last graph on the bottom right gives you, uh, an idea of how many events each year and what were the weddings, just to show you that we are more than the wedding. And the way we're growing and it's word of mouth, um, I, I don't even know if we've truly peaked yet, I think this year gave us a better idea as we go into budget time, but, um, from the looks, being in that seat, I think we're just going to continue to grow into two thousand and twenty and twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Then on the, one last thing I'd like to point out is thanking our past board members, um, for making the recommendation and the city council for passing the tax levy. That will truly help us as we continue to use this facility and the wear and tear on all of our goods, there's going to be replacement that will need to happen soon, so that will help us to replace goods and items and stay up with maintenance and repair, so thank you for that. And also our current, our new, uh, board members, Mary is here today, she's wonderful and likes to play with numbers, and she has, she has given us a better format of our profit and loss, so we take what the city has, and then we do a little more detailed work on our end so that we can have a better scenario, a better caption of what is our revenue, what is our expenses, and what is the truer pro, profit and loss, without asking Ange to, can you break down linens into this, that, and the other? So, we would never do that to you, but we, we feel we have a good thing going with our staff, we have over twenty-four part-time employees, two full-time, we have a great pavilion board and special events committee that make this successful, so we thank you for that. We do have a hiccup coming in two thousand and twenty, though, we will be losing one of our full-time, it's not me. So, um, that's something that may have an overlap when you look at the employee benefits at one point, so. Any questions? Because I was only supposed to have three and a half minutes?
Two.
Two? I object. Thank you for allowing me to share.
Thank you, Tricia. All right, that brings us to the time for, uh, mayor comments, anything from you. Sam. Todd?
I want to just quickly just recognize Ken Nutrition, um, for their, uh, successful, um, expansion project.
Can you grab a microphone, do you have a microphone there? Or come to the?
Yeah, I just thought, real quickly, I want to just publicly recognize Ken Nutrition and their investment into our community. If you remember back in two thousand and seventeen, we sat up here and they outlined, um, an expansion project of over thirty-seven million dollars in total investment, which is the largest expansion project in the history of our community. I think in Sam's city manager report, he had just noted that they did apply and we did approve their certificate of completion, ultimately signifying the completion of that project, so I thought, I thought it was important because as, as council in the city, we did approve a full five-year TIF rebate on that project, and it just signifies, um, what those TIF dollars go for, and they're for good projects such as that, um, ten point five million of that total investment was for new taxable valuation, um, which will generate about three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars annually for, for our community going forward. So I think from the city standpoint, um, SCDC and our community, I just think we need to publicly thank Ken Nutrition, uh, for their investment in our, in our community and, uh, congratulate them on a, on a, a successful project, so just wanted.
Are they running, up and running production yet?
They're very, very close, we were just in there, um, a couple weeks ago, and they're probably about ninety percent close to being able to be a full, um, up and running. We're going to be doing a ribbon cutting at some point, we'll be doing something through SCDC to be able to get people in there, take a tour of the facility, because it is state of the art. I think, Brad, you had the, the fire department in there not too long ago, and it was pretty, pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's, uh, a shining gem for Sheldon to have a facility like that come to Sheldon and build. It's impressive, if you get the chance, go out and see it.
Yeah, so we'll have a ribbon cutting, kind of signifying the completion of that here in the next thirty to sixty days, so once that is, uh, scheduled, we'll make sure we get that on the hopper and make sure we make that a big deal, too, so, anyway, just wanted to point that out.
Another thing in Sam's report, I think they're talking fifteen full-time employees and an average salary of, what, fifty-four thousand or something like that, that's a considerable payroll.
Yep, fifteen, created fifteen new jobs, um, adding to their current employee base of about thirty-three, and, yeah, they're estimating about fifty-four thousand dollars per job that was created, so, yep, significant.
Yep, yep, it's great. Thank you, Kurt. David, anything you'd like to share?
All right.
Counsel to my left.
Fine, good.
Counsel to my right. Okay, and I have nothing further either, so take a motion to adjourn?
No, closed session.
Oh, that's right.
I'll make the motion to go into closed session.
Second. Uh, roll call, please.
Hamel.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
How is new Ratu?
Okay, we're back.
All right, it is six thirty-eight PM, and we are back in open session. After discussion, we have a motion that would like to be presented.
Okay, because of the impact of the merger on negotiation, I would offer a motion to set a public hearing for January fifteenth on the proposed merger and authorize the city attorney to seek a delay on the purb hearing, which is also scheduled for January fifteenth.
I'll second that motion.
The motion we have support, is there any comments or questions? Roll call, please.
Kent.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Barahona.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, now can we take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, so moved, support, I mean.
Roll call, please.
Barahona.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
We are adjourned.
Do you want these back?
Yes, please.
Oh, if anybody wants to go see the new fire truck.